Aloha, Kako. Welcome and good evening. My name is James Huestis and I am the president of the Wyman Community Association. Thank you to those joining us online tonight for our regular monthly Wyman Community Association Town Meeting. Tonight we'll be hearing important updates and discussing issues relating to the challenges our community faces, especially during this time. We're grateful to be joined by representatives and leaders from our community. I encourage you to follow, like, and subscribe to the Wyman Community Association on Facebook, Instagram, and YouTube. You may also find relevant information and resources on our website at wymanatown.org. We strive to keep our accounts active and up to date. And at this point, I would like to recognize the Wyman Community Association Board members, our Vice President Michael Donnelly, our Treasurer Jeremy Madrid, our Secretary Nancy Carr Smith, and our Directors Riley Smith, Lonnie Olson Chang, David Greenwell, and Patty Cook. On behalf of the Wyman Community Association Board, we are grateful for support shown by you, the community, to hold virtual town meetings during this time. And much like last year, we will continue to hold town meetings in this virtual setting with our aim to provide you a connection to our community leaders and an opportunity to learn about important and relevant information. Thank you all for your interest in joining us all during our past meetings and for viewing and sharing those recordings. You're welcome to revisit these recordings and these videos up on our Facebook page or even up on our YouTube channel. The Wyman Community Association is a nonprofit organization that strives to promote open participation by all of the Wyman community, develop leadership, and support the smart growth of the region. If you'd like to support the work that we have done and help continue our effort in connecting with the community, you're more than welcome to donate and join as a member. If this is something that interests you and you'd like to receive more information, please email us at wymancommunityassociation@gmail.com or visit our website at wymanatown.org. On our website, you will find an option to contribute and join digitally. You're welcome to mail us your membership as well on a form if you prefer, and you may find this on the website. Your contributions and membership allow us to reach out and connect with the community in this setting and support the work that the WCA has done over the past sixty years. Mahalo. And as mentioned and per our agenda this evening, we'll be hearing some important updates from our community leaders and some of our elected officials as well. We will begin this evening with a community policing update, and we will then have an opportunity to hear from one of our council members representing the Wyman District and District Nine here. Following, we will spotlight our May nonprofit, which is Community First. As we move towards our main portion of tonight's agenda, we will learn and discuss issues related to solid waste in our community. This evening, we are grateful to present you with a full and informative agenda. And after we hear from these officials, we'll have allocated time to share your questions with our presenters. We appreciate community members sending their questions ahead of time as well as using the chat feature on Facebook on the live feed to pose your questions. And we will do our best to capture these and post and pose these to our interviewers and our presenters. Thank you to our WCA Board members, Michael Donnelly and Patty Cook, for joining me this evening and presenting these questions. So at this time, I would like to start off our virtual meeting by welcoming our Community Policing Officer Justin Cavantin to share a few updates with us. Mahalo, Officer. Thank you for joining us.
Hi. Thank you for having me again. I apologize. Our captain couldn't be here. He got called off the court. And my other community police officer is actually on vacation. So, and I'll stay as long as I can. I have a seven-year-old at home waiting to open her presence, so. But anyway, so the captain just wanted me to go over what he normally does with the crime trends and the traffic trends. And then I'll follow up with some actual events I'm actually holding later on this month. I'm bringing back Coffee with a Cop. So it's going to be held at Starbucks and at Wyman, Wyman Coffee Company at Parker Square. I'll give you guys that dates. But anyway, the traffic, to start off with the traffic trends. Traffic, the traffic has significantly been a lot busier on the roads. With the return of some tourists, we definitely see them on the roads and on the highways, you know, stretching all there from South Corner to North Cohala at the Valleys. I work with the North Cohala Community Police Officer and, you know, Polo Lu Valley is a very visited destination up there. So, yeah, so, yeah, traffic's been very up. This month, our patrol officers issued almost nine hundred citations. A lot of it came from speeding. A lot of it came from speeding and distracted driving. So compared with the same time last year in April in 2020, when COVID just got kicked off, we're up almost six hundred tickets this year. So, and I, I can see why, you know, whenever, when COVID first kicked off last year, you know, everybody had to start wearing masks and everybody got that, that, that resistance of, we're not sure how, how far we had to be from each other and stuff like that. But definitely this year, the officer's been on the road enforcing the laws out there. A lot of it, like I said, was speeding. Two hundred of that was speeding. A hundred forty of it was moving citations, which was like, you know, passing on a double solid yellow, not stopping at a stop sign, disregarding the lights, you know, in here in town or at Waikoloa. A lot of it came from, a majority of it came from unsafe. So like cracked windshields, you know, brake lights being out and stuff like that. And of course, some seat belts and some child restraints. But all in all, the patrol officers here have been working hard to keep the streets safe. We did have ten major collisions though, on top of that, just this month alone. So major collisions are identified through significant damage done to the vehicle or if there's injuries involved. So we had ten last month and we remained at ten for this month. But as far as the traffic goes and the DUIs is, we got, our officers were able to make fourteen DUI arrests this month. So yes, there is some drunk driving still happening on our roadways, but officers are out there trying to catch as much as they can just to keep the road safe. Moving on to the, the, the crime trends this, this month. We had a really big one at the beginning of the month, the first week. It was at By Church Row. That in itself, I think stemmed about over a dozen other cases from just that one incident. Pretty much a car was taken. They made entry into a residence and it took things. And I believe the car was located later in Hilo and then credit card transactions was done. So a lot of other charges came out from that. But we had nine unauthorized entry into motor vehicles when is when people go into other people's vehicle without permission and take stuff. We had about eight assaults that we recorded. That one burglar I talked to you about. And we had about, we had nine drug, drug cases. So the drug cases is unique because all nine came from traffic stops. So when officers stopped the vehicle for infraction, speeding infraction or a DUI, you know, drugs or drug paraphernalia was, was seen in plain view in the car. And that's how a drug case gets initiated. So we had about, we had about nine of those drug cases. And then we had fifteen deaths for the district. Overall, the, the crime trend, it, it can be, it can go down. So I just wanted to express Captain Pauli's recommendation from last meeting. You know, let's cut back on the, giving the criminals the crime of opportunity. Let's continue to lock our vehicles, even though we're running into food land for a couple items. Let's continue to lock our vehicles, lock our residents when we're not there. I'm not saying lock everything when you're home. You know, enjoy the fresh air and all that, but when you're gone, lock your, lock, lock your items. And if you guys can please pass that on to other members that are not here today or even in the community, if we just get the word of mouth out, you know, we can bring, we can eliminate that crime of opportunity for these criminals out there. And a lot of them are transient. Actually, a lot of our cases were transient people. Being that said, they're not from Wyman. They're passing through. And they, they commit these crimes and they keep going south or north. And then they end up back in the district where they came from. So, yeah, let's go ahead and eliminate, try our best to eliminate that opportunity for them. And that goes on in saying also, you know, don't leave laptops or purses or high-value items right on the, right on the seat when, when you can put them in the trunk or just throw a blanket over them. Other than that, the captain also wanted me to cover, you know, besides the traffic, bring, bring, bring to his attention anything you guys have concerns about. You know, he knows we only meet once, once a month, but he's very, he has an open-door policy. He is still the acting commander for this district until a new, until we get a new captain. We're not sure when that's going to happen, but he is the acting commander and he has open-door policy for each and every one of you. You know, reach out to him. I know his email is out there. If you guys, you guys can also reach out to the community police officers. There's myself, Officer Cavantin and Officer Nacino. We've been, we've been trying our best to make our rounds around town, which is my area of responsibility. So I, I try my best to go to the parks every day. I go to the nature walk. I take, I just take strolls along the businesses. I try to be visible as much as I can. And I'll, I'll pop in and out of businesses and introduce myself. I know I'm, I had a meeting with Tim Richards the other week and we had a good discussion at his office. But I am working with the situation at the parks. My partner is working the issues down at the resorts and along Hopuna, along the roadway at Hopuna with that person camping over there. So, yeah, we're trying to get as much outreach to them as we can so we can get them help. And the other thing, the last thing I just wanted to bring up, like I said, I'm trying to bring back Coffee with a Cop and I got locked in for two days. I will be sending out the, I'm working on the South Cola Police Newsletter that gets emailed. All the information will be in there, but since I got, since I got you guys here, the first one will be on the twenty-first, which is a Friday in May. Both events from eight to eleven. I'm going to have a, two tents, the tables. We're going to follow all, all COVID nineteen guidelines. We're going to have face masks, hand sanitizers there for the patrons. That basically is just a drop-in, get your coffee if you guys, you know, want to talk stories. That's, that's, that's what the event is for. You know, a lot of people are busy in the morning. I participated in one in Corner just recently, last month, and it went pretty good. It was at Corner Mountain Coffee by Honocao Harbor. And, you know, we get those people that are in a rush, but they'll take that couple of minutes, something that was on their mind and, you know, just present it to us and we'll give them our, our two cents about it. And then next thing you know, we build a, we build a rapport and a relationship and then we can help them solve a problem. So that's what I'm trying to do with the Coffee with a Cop. And the second date is actually at Starbucks twenty-seven. I believe it's a Thursday at Parker Ranch Center. So, yeah, if you guys can pass the word around, I'll send out an email with the brochure. If you guys want to share that brochure, email, email people on your contact list, that'd be great. But like I said, I'm trying to get the South Cola Police Newsletter out and all the information will be on there. And one other thing, actually, next week, starting next week, Monday is actually Police Week. So I talked to a few community members. Somebody reached out to me in the Sandalwood area. They actually want to do a sign-waving event near Church Row for Police Appreciation Week. So if you see them out there, I already talked to them about the safety, you know, about wearing high-visibility clothing, staying off onto the shoulder on a sidewalk. So, yeah, the, the community really responding well to some of the contacts I've been making. And my goal is to do my own sign-waving event down by Church Row as well. We're going to do a, to raise alcohol awareness so we can bring this DUI number down as much as we can. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna send out an email when I get locked in on that sign-waving event. And also I'm planning on doing a couple more sign-waving events at the schools. The schools reached out to me because a lot of the Wyman School went back to all grades open. So I know they had a traffic jam over there in town by the post office. So we're trying to address that. And then also Waikoloa, Waikoloa Elementary and Intermediate, there was a, there is a traffic problem down there too. So I'm trying to get both down there and up here, you know, be two places at once. And, yeah, just, just reach out to me if you guys want. And then also, also planning a Kiki ID event. You know, I know there's only twenty, twenty-something days left in school, but I, I'm, I'm planning to get with these principals at the schools to start planning for next school year already. Because then here my other community police officer. We'll be, we'll be happy to bounce, bounce ideas off each other and then we can hopefully run an event. But that's pretty much what I got. If you guys have any other questions for me, like I said, feel free to contact me via email or a phone call or, you know, where we work at the station. But thank you again for inviting us and having us every month.
Absolutely. Thank you, Officer Cavantin. It's good to see you. And boy, you sure are playful. There's a lot of events going on and a lot of things you're supporting our community. So thank you so much for all that you do in supporting us. Just a quick question. What was the date scheduled for the sign-waving for Police Appreciation Week?
The, the person I contacted, her name is Christine. I'll shoot you her info. She is planning on doing it on that Tuesday. I believe the Tuesday is the eleventh. So they're gonna, they're gonna be out there probably from three to four or four to five, one of those times. I'll, I'll, I'll get you that information. And actually, the East Side, Hilo, they're planning a sign-waving event on Monday to start off. But Christine's, Christine had a lot of things to get done on Monday, so she said she'll do it on Tuesday. But, yeah, she's, she's been really helpful and she's actually spearheading that. So I, I've been talking with her and she's, she's, she actually reached out to me. And the way the conversation started was, you know, she didn't agree with everything she was seeing on the news about police. And then just so happened it was Police Week. So, you know, I planted the seed in her head and, and we came up with this sign-waving event. So she'll be out there and she recruited a few friends. But feel free, I'll, I'll, I'll make her contact information available for you guys if you guys want to touch bases with her.
Thank you so much, Officer. It's good to see you again. You have a great evening and happy birthday to your kid there. Yeah, have a nice evening. If you have to go, that's always fine. Thank you.
All right. Take care.
Aloha. All right. Thank you, Officer. So next up, I'd like to welcome in our council member for District Nine, Council Member Tim Richards, to update us on a few words here from the council, happenings there and news and information. Welcome, Councillor.
Thank you, James. I really appreciate the invitation. Councilwoman Heather Kimball can't join us tonight. She had an obligation come up last minute. So I'll just briefly touch on a few things before we get to that. I just wanted to compliment our community police officer, Cavantin. I tell you what. He, he is really a go-getter. He's really trying to get a lot done very quickly. And I did meet with him and our other CPO. We discussed the problem at Wyman Park and we had the problem with a homeless issue and talked to the police chief about that. I tell you, they were on that very, very quickly. And within, Police Chief said twelve minutes after the nine-one-one call came in, there was an arrest made. And so they responded extremely quickly. So I really appreciate that. And the intention is to be more visible right now. So anyway, good. I'm glad to hear we're getting the Coffee with a Cop back on order. So, but again, thanks for the, the call. Two topics I was going to touch on. And, you know, I'm a politician. I can talk all night. So, but I'm not going to do that because I have Keeper of the Gate Patty looking at me. What I was going to touch on were two things. First of all, the budget was announced, the, the May budget. And then also the Granton Aid Program that the county does. I'll start with the Granton Aid Program. The Granton Aid Program is a community program administered by our county that funds needy programs throughout the whole county. And last year, it was a million-dollar program with typically and classically, the mayor kicks in another five hundred thousand dollars. So it was a one-point-five-million-dollar program. Last year, Sue Leloy kicked that up and it's actually now two-and-a-half-million-dollar program. What, and, and we did things differently this year. We had about a hundred and ninety applications for seeking funding. As I mentioned, we have two-and-a-half-million dollars to award and there are, it was done differently. Before, it was always part of the Finance Committee. Now it's a standalone ad hoc committee. And members of the, the Granton Aid Committee this year was led by Sue Leloy and Ashley Kirkowitz. They co-chaired it. And then Heather Kimball and I were the other two members of the, before, members of the committee. And we looked at it a little bit differently and approached it a little bit differently this year. Like I said, there was a hundred and eighty-some applications. Their total request was almost nine million dollars. So the needs were high and not to be surprised because of what we saw with the COVID problem. Long story short, they came up with, or we came up with a metric, and I'll read it to you. In order to make this make sense, what we did was have six categories. And rather than just taking each application standalone, we grouped them. And so we had five days of interviews and they're grueling days. We Zoom called for between, I think, seven or eight hours a day and just interview after interview. And the six groups that came up with were, and it was using the acronym CHANGE, Community, Ed, and Economy, Health and Wellness, Arts and Culture, Natural Environment, Government and Civics, and Education. What we tried to do is put the different programs together so we could see if we could start seeing synergy between different programs and get a little bit more efficient with the money we were awarding. And I think it worked actually quite well. We started to put things together because one of the questions we asked was, how are we going to go forward? And what are you going to do to fund this program next year? What, what's the plans? And we started connecting the, the different groups. That actually worked quite well. And the recommendation came out this week to council. Everything was reviewed. A lot of questions were asked about it. And if people want to go back and review the video, there's a lot of explanation on how we did things. But again, long interview, put in groups, and then seeking synergy. And one of the, the programs, I'll just use an example, was the Boys and Girls Club. And that is an outstanding program and we funded it quite heavily, not, not their full funding. But what we saw going through this whole pandemic, the, the director there, Chad Cabral, I tell you, he's really stepped it up and we were able to get a lot of amplification of the funding we received. That's one example. The food basket was very modest with their ass because they recognized that other people needed funding. And so, and it stretches the, the whole gamut from education, as, as I mentioned, the different groups. So it worked quite well. The funding starts actually in July on next year's budget cycle. And then the difference is, we're going to be tracking this a lot closer this year. And the next year questions, we'll have a one-year track record. We're already going to start working on next year and putting the metrics together. So if there's any program out there that you're interested, that may qualify for funding from the county, explore it now and start asking questions and, you know, we're happy to answer those questions. So I'm going to transition now from that. Again, that was two-and-a-half million. And if there's any questions on that, you can follow up with my office and we can connect you and start helping you going forward. Shift now, we'll go to the budget. And you know me and my budget, my budget questions, and I'm always very in tune with our county. Our budget cycle starts actually in January when the different departments are putting their budgets together. The first budget is delivered to council first part of March. And then there's a follow-up budget first part of May, which is evolved a little bit from the March budget. The March budget we were presented with was five-hundred-and-ninety-million dollars, which is pretty much a status quo budget carryover from this past year. We just received the May budget, and this is for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. And the budget is six-hundred-and-nine million. So we've gone up about not quite four percent. Question is, where did this money come from? First of all, the certified values of the real property tax, which is about two-thirds of our, our income, was higher than initially projected. So that extra eighteen million dollars, about ten million, comes from the increased value of the real property tax. No increased taxes, no increased tax rate. It's just the value ever appreciated a little bit. We also received, will be receiving about five million dollars from grants and state and federal grants. And so that's addition there. And there's an additional about three million dollars that is coming from us, meaning our fund balance, which is the money we didn't spend from last year, gets applied to spending next year. So that's where the extra eighteen million dollars come from. Now, the expenditures of that are kind of wide and varied. And honestly, we just got the budget this week and I haven't spent enough time poring through it. I haven't gotten my books yet and literally it's a stack of books about that high. So I haven't spent enough time going through that. But that gives you an idea of where we're going. It's a modest increase from this year, like I said, about four percent. And I don't see or foresee any changes in our tax rates. I think from a financial side, we're, we're doing quite well. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the capital improvement budget. And I just want to verify a number. That capital improvement budget was also delivered to us and it is, don't want to misquote you, about a hundred and seventy million dollars going forward. What people don't understand is on this hundred-and-seventy-million-dollar capital improvement budget, I, I use the term wish list. This is not funded projects. These are projects that we want funded and we have to go seeking, finding the funding. Of that, there is about, was it about three million dollars that is funded? And about forty million dollars that will probably be funded with bonds. But that still leaves, you know, about a hundred and thirty million dollars of projects that we're not going to get to. We have not seen the mayor's priority list as far as that coming forward. But a little bit of this is on hold because the funding coming out of Washington DC, the jobs program, we have not seen any of the details of that as of yet. And it is anticipated that we should have a fair amount of funding for infrastructure. And what that means is roads, sewer systems, solid waste. And I can see Georgine smiling when we get to all that stuff. The infrastructure that we truly need. So we're looking forward to hearing more details on that. And one of the big things that we have pushed in our councils, in our council meetings with these directors is be sure to have things shovel-ready, meaning when this money is available, we, we want to act very, very quickly. And if we have that available to us, we should be able to jump in, clean some finances for our county as a whole. So with that, those are, you know, big numbers, big plans. And we're a little bit in a holding pattern until we see what happens with the jobs tax. So with that, James, if there's any questions come in, happy to answer. I'll be on the call. The rest, we can come back if anything comes in.
Mahalo, Councillor. Thank you so much for your time. And yeah, absolutely. I'm sure there's things you can jump in on as we get to that point and addressing some of these issues and your experience as well with that. All right. So for the month of May, Wyman Community Association will be spotlighting Community First as our nonprofit of the month. And I would like to welcome in Randy Corahara, the Executive Director of Community First, to share with us, you know, the collaborative effort being done by Community First, especially during this time. We thought it would be best, most relevant to hear some amazing work amidst National Nurses Week and leading into National Hospitals Week as well. So welcome, Randy. Thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you for having me. I really appreciate this opportunity to share a little bit about what we're doing. First off, you know, a little bit about the nonprofit. We were founded in twenty-fourteen by the late Barry Taniguchi. We're really focused around health, health care, and also health literacy. Sort of what we do is we're really good at convening. We bring together various stakeholder groups, for providers, to policymakers, to people from the community to look at efforts or challenges and how to get around it or how to improve it. And ultimately, how to improve the health of our people. The vision that we have is really a community where people take responsibility for their own health. They have their own, they embrace their kuliana for their own health and of those that are are with them, you know. So take responsibility for their own health as well as the well being of others. Some of the the past initiatives that we're still doing till today, ongoing initiatives include the advanced healthcare directives. And we're fortunate enough to recently be able to provide the Waimaita community with this virtual educational effort, outreach effort on advanced healthcare directives. And thanks to Patty and some of the other people in the community, I think we had over twenty something people that received the education and opportunity to fill out an advanced healthcare directive. We also do blood pressure, blood pressure campaigns. We did one in twenty twenty, just before covid hit during hard month. And it went really well. We included a educational component where we take it into the schools as well. And because of some opportunities for expanded funding around that, we're gonna go island wide next year. This year we didn't do it just because of covid and of all the restrictions around that kind of effort. So hopefully by next year, we'll be able to take this island wide. Last year in September, we launched a media campaign called Art Kuliana in response to our community spread that was going on last year. We, I believe, did a pretty good job. I mean, we pretty much, our message has always been, you know, stopping the spread of covid is all of our kuliana. And and that message continues till today, although we're kind of transitioning into vaccinations now. And that's kind of leads us into our current effort, which has been since the January sixth. We've been convening all of our healthcare providers that have been providing vaccinations. We've been meeting every Wednesday night and, you know, proud to say that, you know, all of our healthcare providers, all those, you know, all of the organizations have been working very well together. To share things that they've been doing that's been working, things that haven't been working. But as a a platform and forum for everybody to make sure that we're all in this together, you know, and and I gotta say that I've been very impressed with how everybody has stepped up. We have hospitals that have the ability to, you know, give, you know, thousands, you know, of vaccinations down to a community healthcare clinic that can ma- maybe do twenty to fifty. But whatever it is, it's part of getting us to the point where as many people get the vaccination as possible. Recently, we've been experiencing this this transition of having more supply than demand. And I think that's been all over the news. We've seen this coming for a while. Part of what we've been working with the group on is, you know, strategies and messaging around how to move this next phase forward. Bringing the vaccines as close to the community, as close to the people and as convenient as possible. And eliminating and eliminating as many barriers as possible going forward. So those that were anxious or eager to get it, got it. Now we're gonna address those that are either hesitant or those that maybe have not gotten it just because it's not that important to them. Not that they're against it or anything, but it's just something that has not been a priority. So that's kind of the focus of the work that we're doing right now. But just real quick, I just want to do a shout out to all the nurses, all the healthcare professionals for the beginning today of Nurses Week, next week is Hospital Week. And I know it's Police Week and it's EMS Week coming up soon. So, you know, we have a lot to be thankful for with our first responders, you know, out there and again, thanks for the opportunity. Yeah, that's it. Thanks.
Mahalo Randy. Thank you so much. And I I will put up a little flyer we have of yours in a moment here as we go through some of the community announcements. So thank you for sharing about Community First and all the work you do with Art Kuliana. Patty, did you have something that you wanted to comment on?
Yes, Randy, you're a nonprofit. Could you tell us, you have a website and a really good program opportunity to contribute to your work? Would you just mention that briefly?
Yes, our website is communityfirsthawaii.org. So anyone can go there. You know, I I just started in January. I don't even know if there's a donate button there, you know, so but really, I think, you know, the main thing we want to really encourage right now is the community support in encouraging other people to get vaccinated. So whether you're a leader of a of a church leader or a, you know, a big family Ohana, you know, doing your part in ensuring or encouraging others in your network to get vaccinated is the most important thing right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. And thank you, Patty, for that question. Wonderful. Thank you so much, Randy, for all the work you do and with Community First. Really appreciate that. All the support you give in our communities. Thank you. So with that being said, I do have a couple of other community announcements and I'm just gonna put up a couple images here. So let's see. All right. So first of all, it is, it is also another, another event that's happening here. It's it's Teacher Appreciation Week too. So first, I want to thank all of our teachers out there for all the work that they're doing in the community to support our families and our students. So thank you to all the teachers and all the hard work you're doing, especially towards the end of the year here as we get towards the summer. All right. And then a couple of things to go through here. So bear with me. Also, if if you are in need of and looking for some assistance with rent and mortgage relief. There are a couple of programs and opportunities for you to get in touch with some organizations. I think you let me zoom in a little bit here for you so you can see some of these and their contact information. If you're looking for some assistance and guidance and help paying mortgage and paying rent payments. Please reach out to these organizations and with the contact information that is provided here to really help yourselves during this time and help those who are in need. So thank you to these organizations for stepping up and leading the way and supporting our communities. Mahalo. Yes, Patty.
Just I would add that this flyer is on our Facebook page so that people can have easy access to being able to make the connections. And all of this is being coordinated by the county largely with federal money, but thank you. It's really helpful.
Thanks, Patty. Appreciate that input there and and more than more than I really know and can handle. So thank you so much. Yeah. So it's up on our Facebook page, all this information and contact there. So I encourage you to reach out if you if you need some more additional support during this time. All right, let's see. Next one we have, if it will let me go over. Share this again. This one is really just the logo of the organization, but I just, it's just a reminder that tomorrow is a another food drop from the food basket here in Waimaita at the, excuse me, at the Spencer Clowney Shooty Waimaita District Park. Please wear your masks. This will be happening at ten AM tomorrow. They will be holding this ba- this food drop here in Waimaita and they won't be holding another one in Waimaita till a little later in the year possibly. But there will be some other ones during the summer, either at Waikoloa or Honaka. And we'll be do our best to put those dates up on our Facebook page for that information. But we believe there'll be a partnership with Parker Ranch later in the summer with food baskets, as they did in the past with a food drop there. Next up, we have another opportunity for support for our families. This is the, this is a food drop one time kind of deal with Waimaita Coffee Company. Kind of a drive through pickup of pantry goods, stable pantry goods. This is happening on Wednesday, May twenty sixth, so a little bit later this month. They're looking for donations as well. So if you're on the, an opportunity to donate, please do so. Contact information is there on the screen. And they're also looking for some help, I believe, some kookua, if you want to lend a hand in getting this together. So that information's there for you. Also, on similar lines, we have, let's see if I can get the next one up here. There is a vaccine clinic happening in Waikoloa Village. And look at this one up here. All right. So let's see here. This is a vaccine clinic being put on by KTA stores in the Waikoloa Village. Information is there. This will be held on Saturday, May fifteenth from nine AM to one PM. So if you're looking to have an opportunity to get vaccinated, this is a, this is a perfect opportunity at a public place in Waikoloa Village at the association banquet room. So being put on by KTA and the Wa- and the Waikoloa community there. All right. Next up, we have, it doesn't like me to share different types of files. So we have a couple of other events here happening in the community. And as as Randy mentioned, and I'll put it up once again. And this is from Community First and Art Kuliana. So mahalenui to all of our our healthcare professionals, our nurses. As we celebrate National Nurses Week this week and National Hospitals Week next week, along with our teachers and police. So this is another opportunity to thank our healthcare professionals and show our gratitude for the work that they're doing during this time. And let's see if it'll let me go to the next one. And next up, we have an event here happening at Kahului Theater. Welcoming back Robert Casamaro on May eighth at four in the afternoon and the evening, early evening there. Tickets are on sale. You can also, this will be kind of viewed on Kahului TV, so their streaming platform for a lot of their events. So I encourage you to look at their website for more information and get a ticket, enjoy yourselves with family and friends watching this event on their streaming, on their streaming service. I believe that is my last announcement, other than to say don't forget, it is Mother's Day this weekend. So spend some time with your moms if you're able to in a safe capacity and please share some love and gratitude with them as you celebrate Mother's Day. So mahalo. And one last thing, if, you know, we want to thank you, our viewers and fellow community members for continuing to do your part, your part in preventing the spread of covid nineteen by wearing masks. For practicing good physical distancing, avoiding large gatherings and helping to maintain a low rate of infection here in our communities. Please also be aware of any continued covid scams, especially as it relates to the vaccine. Please continue to do your part for the health and safety of our community and of our loved ones. And as Randy mentioned, this is Art Kuliana and we hope that you'll consider being vaccinated when the opportunity is presented to you. Mahalo. And if you are a part of a community group you're a part of, would like assistance and reaching out, as we mentioned with these other opportunities and other events to the wider Waimaita community, please do not hesitate to contact us, email us, email us. We'd be happy to help broadcast an event on our social media platforms or even during here, one of our town meetings. So thank you. All right. So that's enough of me for a little while, I hope. So we'll welcome in our next guest. And as we kind of move into our main portion of tonight's meeting, we would first like to welcome in the Chair of the Environmental Management Commission who represents District Nine. This is Georgine Adams. Mahalo Chair Adams. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you for having me and I am your representative for District Nine. So be sure and let me know what issues are critical for you. I thought I'd go over just what the basic charter of the Environmental Management Commission is. We're made out of nine commissioners, one for each district, appointed by the mayor and approved by the council. And our responsibility is to advise the Department of Environmental Management. Ramsey Mansour is the director. So we give him more than enough advice on solid waste and wastewater management programs. Focusing on waste reduction strategies, recycling, litter control and many other issues. We also provide recommendations and comments to the county council, especially on legislation and regulations. And right now, our big adventure is trying to figure out how best to fund our underfunded, solid and wastewater programs. So what we're trying to do is to research issues, bring in guest speakers and look at what's being proposed or what we believe should be proposed for action from the Department of Environmental Management. We hold monthly meetings and they are virtual as everyone goes this year. In fact, we voted that we're going to continue meeting virtually because we think it gives an opportunity for more public participation. So it's it's Zoom meetings and people can join. And we take public testimony on issues of solid waste and and waste management, white wastewater management. You can also submit written testimony, but we do encourage public participation and listen to what we're going on. We also review a monthly, shall we say, status report from the Director of Environmental Management and I guess, provide him advice on what he should be doing. The key issues right now that we're working on is starting with the implementation of the Integrated Solid Waste Management Plan where we have over eighty different recommendations for what to do. I also happen to be on the Solid Waste Advisory Commission Committee that helped prepare that plan. I think it's still, although maybe Ramsey will announce. I think it's on Mitch Roth's desk to be signed. The council did approve the plan. And it's my personal mission to make sure we actually do it, implement all the recommendations that we've got in there for ways to reduce waste and to divert the waste from our one and only Waste Hawaii Sanitary Landfill. We're also very focused on future and current issues with our county sewers and wastewater treatment plants. And I'm sure Ramsey's going to be talking about some of those issues. So that's just a flavor of some of the things we do. We also have the authority to hear appeals if somebody has gotten a decision in action taken by the the Director of DEM can come to the the commission for appeal. We haven't done it, at least not in my lifetime. So that could be an interesting opportunity. But our our mission is basically to represent the community, the citizens and citizens of the county in considering solid waste and wastewater management issues. And our primary focus is no waste. Hopefully, we wouldn't have any waste to manage. What we've got are resources that we need to use and prevent from becoming waste. So plenty of things to deal with. And I'll be happy to answer your question later after Ramsey talks and give you insight into what we all think.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chair Adams. It's really great to have you on the call and spending some time with us here this evening. That's wonderful. And thank you for introducing yourself and really giving us an idea about the about the commission and the work that you do there in that advisory capacity for the for Department of Environmental Management and as well as sending this, these ideas and this purpose to the council. So thank you for all the hard work you do and supporting our communities and representing us. Mahalo. I think at this time, I think I have the director on the call. So we will, we will welcome in Director Ramsey Mansour, who is the the Director of the Department of Environmental Management. I'd like to welcome him back. I think at some point, we hope to have, let's see, Deputy Division Chief for Solid Waste, Mike Caha, join us, I believe, at some point. Hopefully you can call in here to share some updates about the Department of Environmental Management. We spent a little bit of time with Director Mansour previously in the year and we wanted to really dedicate more time with him to talk about some of these issues and really share some of community concerns. So thank you for joining us this evening, Director. It's great to see you again and thanks for being on the call with us.
Well, thank you so much. Aloha, everybody. And I'm glad to join in for the second time. So I already have done introduction, but I am for the newcomers. Definitely, I'm the Director for the Environmental Management Department for the county. And like Chair Adam had mentioned, we have a lot of challenges ahead of us. So when it comes to solid waste and wastewater. So as a director, I oversee the solid waste programs and the wastewater treatment plans. And also the abandoned vehicles within the county. So if you all have any questions and concern pertaining to these three major topics, I would love to entertain them. Three major topics, I would love to entertain them. And hopefully I could be able to provide any answers to your questions. As far as the integrated waste management, uh, solid waste management plan. Uh, that was completed, it was prepared and completed, and thanks. To all people were involved, the commission members and uh, our staff. For getting it done, just to let you know, this is. Uh, a living document, uh, definitely subject to change. And as we move forward into this upcoming four years under Mitch um, administration, and hopefully we get another four years. So we could implement all of our programs. And definitely, there's so many innovations when it comes to resource uh, recovery. It counts either for vehicle running on hydrogen versus capturing the gas from the landfill and put it to get used. Um, and also try to manage. Our plastics and glasses and carports and. And get them out of the landfill, so we can at least capture it as a resource. And definitely the big issue is the composts. You know, how are we going to proceed forward with that? So we could be able to, we understand the mulch is very successful program within the island. Uh, everybody that lives on the island loves to get some of that mulch. It's uh, definitely a high commodity. I look at it as commodity because it is a resource. That uh, we generate and give back to the community. So that is, that is a plus. In addition to that, uh, definitely there is admin rules, changes to our. Solid waste uh, rules. Um. I know part of uh, the most recent rule change was banning the trailers and. I know that got some attentions and I bet you, a lot of people may have questions for me about it tonight, so I figured let me bring it up. So uh, but definitely um, that was a major concern was done. Uh, through the prior administration. And they acted on it um, right at the end of the year, and it was supposed to implement in March. So as we came in, we looked at it and uh, worked uh, with the mayor and the administration to extend it. Because as a Director, I don't have the authority, once the admin rules. Enacted on, so I cannot revise it, I cannot revoke the decision making and what have you. Because there's another process, which we call that deal process, somebody has. To object to it, it has to go through the deal process and what have you. So, but the, the mayor was uh, generous enough to understand the situation and. He added it to the COVID proclamation, and we got forty-five days extension. And that became effective April sixteen. So uh, definitely there's a lot more admin rule coming up that. The prior administration had, but as part of the admin rule, we're going to go through it. With the staff to make sure that um. Definitely continue providing the service that we're supposed to provide. And also to protect our environment, reduce waste, reuse it. And take it out of our landfills, with that said, I'm, I'm open to entertain any question and. Hopefully, uh, you guys got a lot of it for me.
Thank you, thank you Director, um, I appreciate that, and thank you so much for joining us once again. Yes, we have a couple of questions that were submitted ahead of time, and. As I mentioned at the top of the meeting, if any of our viewers have any particular questions, please use the Facebook chat. And we'll try and capture your questions and share them in here. Um, so I'd like to take a little bit of time here and. I know, welcome the Director as well as Chair Adams back in and Council Richards to address any of these things and talk about this. Kind of in a relaxed atmosphere here and a conversation, uh, but I'd like to welcome in our board members, uh. Uh, Patty Cook and Mike Donnelly for helping pose some of these questions. And we'll also try to intersperse some of the live feed questions, so uh, Patty and Mike, I'm going to pass it off to you. To kind of lead this effort right here, and the floor is yours.
Thanks James, I'll take the first one. So why don't we get right into the trailer business and the challenges there? Uh, so in South Kohala, the residents typically work outside of. Uh, the district, whether it's in Kona or Hilo, and so they're leaving. Early in the hours before the transfer stations open. And then returning home at a very late hour, uh, late, late. Afternoon, early evening, right when the transfer stations are closing, so. Typically, they go to the transfer stations on the weekend. I'm raising my hand, I'm one of them. Um, and so the quantity may be such that. The trailers are the only viable option. With green waste and, and the sort, so how can we? Uh, are there, it just welcomes some thoughts on tackling the safety piece, certainly. But accommodating trailer usage, and as we talked before the meeting. A lot of people have trailers here, and so. Uh, I think it's in the best interest of the community, the community wants to know how can we work with the county to, to make this happen?
Uh, that is, Mike, that is a great question, and I drove. Um, early this week, me and Mike, my W D Chief for Solid Waste, so we took a ride. Um, you know, on the transfer station within your district, and I drove each one of them. Definitely the safety is, is a concern because the way they laid out these chutes. They, you know, for a trailer to come in, and I was stood there and witnessed the traffic. A good example of the Waimea uh, transfer station, it's a large site. I was standing there watching the traffic and this Tesla comes in. They, you know, he backs up, but his, he gets out of the car. Take his garbage, dump it in a chute, and this trucks comes in right without paying attention, and they almost collided. Right in front of my eyes. I mean, it just, and the Tesla guy got so mad, I thought they're going to have a fistfight. Literally, they got out of the car and he starts screaming, and I was standing there, it was like, guys. So it's definitely uh, the traffic circulation itself. It brings that major concern of how to deal with the situation unless we have. Actually, two guys standing there controlling traffic full time. To avoid any of this mishaps. But the good thing about that district. You guys only twenty minutes away from a landfill. And like you said, you take it during a weekend. It'll be a nice trip to a landfill, I used to do that in California all the time. I'll make my trips during a weekend, I'll get in the car because I had an hour and fifteen minutes drive. So I, you know, I make it a trip to, you know, I clean my garage, I do my backyard, get in the trailer. I take my wife with me, I said, let's go have lunch, and we go in there. Do our business at the landfill and stop, have a lunch, drive home. And what I did, I did um. I asked my G I S person. To put a map for me with the distance in miles and minutes. So, and, and uh, to the. Kalakaiy landfill, it's only, you know, twenty-seven minutes was the maximum distance. To, to get to the landfill. So at this time, we encourage that you guys continue driving your trailers to the landfill till we figure out. Uh, what we're going to do with these transfer stations and how we're going to try to make them safe. Um, hopefully you guys, you guys got a beautiful drive. Um, you know, like I said, beautiful sceneries to the landfill. So if you continue doing it during the weekend, that would be awesome. Help us out through that till we figure out what we're going to do from the safety aspect of things.
But that's uh, and Patty, if I may, I'll just uh. Tag on to that one, since, since we talked about the, the traffic congestion and the flow. Uh, one of the questions we had was um. First, understanding the personnel who work at the transfer stations outside of the chutes. Um, and kind of understanding their status, the contracted personnel, and. In some cases, Hilo and Kona, they help direct cars, they help. So that multiple cars can back up to each chute, more vehicles per hour can be accommodated. Is this something we can implement across Hawaii County? For the private security transfer station guards as, as part of their tasks, and I, I'll tell you firsthand. Um, typically at the Waimea one, uh, if I went there ten times, eight out of the ten times, they're in their truck. Uh, just doing whatever they're doing. Um, and twenty percent of the time, they, they provide advice if I walk over and ask them. If something could go into the chute, or should I move, so if you can expand upon uh, that person, those personnel. Uh, at the transfer station.
Uh, definitely, um, this is a tough, tough issue for us to also to deal with. I don't know if you familiar with the Kona decision. Uh, the Kona decision doesn't prevent the county of uh, contracting. A third party to do any public servant duties that. Historically and um. And done and performed by county employees. So what we have is we have a security contract currently. That expired just last week, and now we don't have any contract because the Human Resource Department. First, they refuse to extend it because it has to be strictly revised. To address just security and they cannot get into the business of landfilling or transfer station. Because the union does not allow that. And that was in nineteen ninety-seven decision. So from then till now, as a Director, as a county, as a government. Our hand are tied of what we could do and not do. Unless you're going to quadruple the number of staffing, and that impacts the budget. Usually, we have one person, one person. Doing multitasking at these transfer station because I was in Waimea. The person will go down, unhook the trailers, do the hydraulic lines. Come back, so you have, you have one guy multitasking because it's just the budget. Uh, and unfortunately, just to give you a flavor of how much we paid for that security contract. Six hundred thousand dollars a year. Just for two hours before time and two hours after time. A total of four hours a day at six hundred thousand dollars a year, that's the cost to the department, that's very expensive. So we, we put it out to bid, and the human, the, the union and the human resource. Well, they said you have, if you put it out to bid, they have to have a certain certification. What they call it, a guard certification. Like a security, and they have to, nobody bid it, bid on it, so. Right now, we have no contract, nobody bid on it, because no qualified people, just to fit that criteria, because. We cannot go with the old contract because they used to come and help you guys out at the transfer station. That was against the corner decision. So that was my uphill battle within the inside politics. So just so you guys understand the difficulties that we deal with. Um, I know sometimes the public does not see what we deal with, but it's good for me to. To share it with you guys, so you guys understand our business. So definitely, and I hope that, that kind of clear the idea, it's not a matter of just. Get more people, get contracts, you know, it's all has a demo effect. On the whole system.
I, I will say this is Georgine Adams, um, on my list, a personal list of to-dos. Is to try to figure out how we can uh, reduce, if not eliminate, the barriers presented by that Kono decision. Um, but staffing at the transfer stations is uh, a critical issue identified in the. Integrated Solid Waste Management Plan, um. There, there needs to be some real creative looks at the hours that we have, the amount of manpower, we're also looking at. Uh, this solid waste program is looking at a program called um, Master Recyclers. Uh, where we could set up some kind of volunteers to help people know what to put where, so we. It's, it's an issue, it was several issues as Ramsey was describing, and that's the kind of thing that um, the. The Environmental Management Commission is, is trying to figure out how to get our arms around and approach, so I appreciate the comments. And I'll take it back and I'll, I'll scoot it up higher on my list of things to try to tackle.
In addition to that, Mike, just also, as far as the Kuna decision. You know, that was my first challenge as coming into the island from Oahu. And trying to figure out, you know, how are we going to maneuver around it, how are we going to provide the services? And I, I think the challenge is we trying to. Get a state senate bill nine nine seven, which allows for privatization and private. Public partnership, and that bill died. It didn't go anywhere, I thought we, the mayor administration worked very hard. To, to get that, you know, senate bill passed, so at least. It kind of allows us to be able to provide the service, think outside the box, get different. Entities involved and continue providing the services. And also, just to give you an idea, also, very simple idea. Our department is only subsidized by four and a half percent of the general fund. So we get forty-five dollars in every thousand dollars the county collects from taxes. So there's no fun to get all these transfer station, all these services. So we need to start thinking about how we're going to create a funding mechanism. You know, it's very simple math, you know, we could do enterprise fund, we could charge every parcel twenty dollars a month. And you guys will have every service you want. But you know, it comes at a twenty dollars a month for parcel. So, uh, and we need to start implementing that, because the demand of services way up here. But the revenue generation is way below. And uh, we're barely making it with the four and a half percent, think about it, forty-five dollars on every thousand. So it's, it's not much.
Okay, go ahead Patty.
I, I wanted first to comment, thank you for being here and, and listening to us, and you too, um, Georgine, we're really glad you're here. Um, it occurs to us, or to me anyway, when I hear that there was a bill. That died at the legislature that has to do with this kind of an exemption. But I, I don't, I certainly didn't know about it, and I realize I'm only one person, but we are willing as a community. To help advocate for those kinds of things with the legislature, and so please do call us and let us know, um. Because it, it does make a huge difference, and at forty-five dollars out of a thousand, you know, it's amazing that you're able to do what you're doing. Um, so we're willing to help, um. And then shifting gears, really talking about green waste hours, Waimea's transfer stations from six to six. On Wednesday, Saturday, Sunday is really um, a narrow window of time. Um, wondering if there's anything we can do to shift some of that. Oh, and by the way, I wanted to add that the drive from Waimea to the Kalakaiy landfill is not twenty-seven minutes. Unless, of course, we're going to be one of those people, the police are stopping, we're going like bats out of hell, it's much longer, it's probably twice that long.
Yeah, I, I, I took it twenty-seven, I think, from Waimea transfer station.
Yeah, I don't think so, I don't think so.
Uh, we'll, we'll share with you the Google Maps and the routes. But uh, yeah, if you want to take two, highway two fifty, go up the.
No, 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 no. Could somebody else jump in here with me? But anyway, let's talk about.
I'll, I'll jump in and say, I, one of my, my sad stories of COVID years. I usually would volunteer for the Kahului Theater performances. And I timed it door to door, I live at Mount Alani Resort. Short of the, the landfill by about ten, fifteen minutes, thirty minutes, door to door to Kahului. So yeah, you're not doing it in twenty-seven minutes, and if there's a matson truck, all bets are off.
Uh, traffic, yeah, if, I agree with you, if there is a traffic, but hopefully Saturday, you don't have people commuting to work. So you may have less traffic if you want to do it Saturday. You know, trip to a landfill. Hopefully, everybody's at home enjoying the weekend, no commuters.
Actually, one of our board members just pointed out that you probably aren't talking about Kalakaiy, you're talking about Puana Hulu. And that is closer than, um, that might be a twenty-seven minute drive. Let's talk about green waste, please.
Sure, um, the green ways definitely, it's um. You know, we have it three days, I'm a me and my staff and Division Chief, we are every day talking about how could we. We are every day talking about how could we, you know, the people love the molds, people love to done their green ways, even our current contractor complaining about not getting enough green waste delivered to them. So we are in the process of negotiating with the Hawaii Earth Recycling, trying to navigate through that contract because it is you know, we've been in fifty price for that contract, but yeah, we need to figure out the compost aspect of it, how are we gonna deliver the green waste? And how they're gonna capture it and convert it. So there's a lot of ongoing discussion. So hopefully we'll, we'll find, you know, a win-win with them and us and everybody. But yes, the green waste is an issue that is gonna continue being talked about and discussed.
Mike, you're, you do some recycling work up at Pohopolola. Is that relevant here?
For Georgina and Ramsey, I just talk a little bit about your thoughts. From a county perspective and, and our district thinking forward. You know, looking at all the parts of the waste stream and how you can pull pieces out of the waste stream in re recycle and specifically what, what can we look forward to initiatives that you might be working with your team on for number one plastics? And, and the future there? I think I speak for many, not all, but plastics drive me crazy because it is so prevalent. It's in everything, in all the packaging and production that we have for resale. And, and then the other piece is just a thought is just from the educational standpoint to even homeowners residential use. Up at the, where I work, we recycle every piece of food. And the, the food gets dehydrated, it gets composted, piggy out there at Kahua unofficial, not only to farm animals, but it's full circle. It's going right back. It, and so it's not going to the landfill. It gets dehydrated and I just think about all the food waste, but the food stream and scraps and
I think, I think we're losing there a little bit, Mike.
And the likes.
Yeah, I think I got the gist of what he trying to say. Definitely. I, I got the hint. I, I Mike, it's, it's a good question. I'll just give you a a brief history about the dehydrator. You brought it and I, I have to talk about it. Back in nineteen ninety one, I was taking a tour with the city manager of Baker Street to meet regulators in Baker Street, California. And my, my concept, but it didn't go to patent, but I designed this very small unit. You put it where the garbage disposal is. I called it the garbage, the food dehydrator. So instead of putting your waste into a garbage disposal, you actually put on that dehydrator, it hydrates the food and you feed it to your dog or your cat. And it doesn't have to be a waste. It's funny that you're doing it here, which is great. That's a great idea. Definitely don't throw food away. If you could capture it and, and feed it to animals. It's, it's a great idea. But to go back about recycling, definitely plastic. Plastic is, it's a major issue and concern, not only in this island, everywhere else. We have been looking into programs to capture the plastic and maybe mix it with the asphalt or the concrete. You know, and actually I got a few meetings coming up within the next month to meet with these companies to see how they doing it. Unfortunately, most of these are done and proven outside the United States. In our country here in the United States, we have very stringent building code. Very stringent ASHTA, which is the American Association of Highway and Transportation. Because they have to have certain type of mix within the concrete or the asphalt for durability and long lasting and especially the buildings. Because you don't wanna build a building earthquake or end up collapsing. So definitely, but we're looking at it. We're gonna, I'm gonna review their data. I wanna see if they meet our building code when it comes to the concrete strength, the compression and the tensile strength. And, and talk to our building department and figure out if that's something acceptable. So definitely there's talks. I had a meeting with a different group about the reusable container for restaurants, the food containers. And how people could go to a restaurant and eat and use the same container over and over. So we don't, we reduce the amount of these plastic food containers that being coming in to our landfill. So believe me, there is a lot of behind the door work has been going on, you know, till we find the right path. The whole idea is we need to find the right process. We need to be able to bring somebody to the island that willing to take a risk, willing to build a manufacturer or a processing center that could catch the plastic, melt it and turn it to pellets. So we could be able to put it to a better use. I was even entertaining to do a pilot program to use it for our effluent, if wastewater effluent filtration material. Because you know, we're gonna be converting from cesspools. So the idea is, you know, what type of system we could create to give us a better effluent quality, wastewater effluent quality that could meet the Department of Health criteria when it comes to nitrogen, biochemical oxygen demand, total suspended solids and what have you. So all of that, we, you know, we working behind the doors trying to, you know, get there. We, like I said, all these ideas being entertained and looked at within my department. So when I came in, I, you know, been meeting with our division chief to think outside the box solutions to talk to people that have successful history that's been proven on capturing the plastic and the glass and putting it to good use. It's a resource recovery program and we need to get on the program. We need to get on the twenty first century, try capturing these things and, and try to put them to use.
I think, let me just close with this, Patty. And just say real quickly, I think as a county, our diversion rate, I, I mean, I don't know what the goal is, but we've got to get our diversion rate higher. And I understand and completely sympathize with the challenges in terms of the budget is the challenge becomes how do you do that with your existing budget or lack thereof? But the diversion rate, that which does not go to the landfill has to increase. And so yeah, I'm, I'm all ears.
That is.
It's, I'm passionate about what we do up on, on the Saddle Region.
Mike, that is a great question.
Go ahead, Patty.
Unfortunately, the diversion in the state of Hawaii does not have a rate. We need legislatively to change that. It's not a mandate to divert in the state of Hawaii. I don't know if you were aware of that. If you're coming from California like myself, California sets mandate at certain year, you have to be at certain diversion mandate or you get violation and fines. Unfortunately, state of Hawaii, it doesn't have a mandate that we have to meet a certain rate at certain year. And we need to change that so we, people could be driven to do more diversion. Even counties and city need to be driven to do more diversion. I hundred percent agree with you.
I, I guess I would also say from the Environmental Management Commission, we've got several passionate members who are looking at ways to improve diversion. You know, as Ramsey was describing, we need to figure out our own circular processes to reuse that material. We don't have a lot of, of users, of processors, manufacturing. That's not one of the things we do on this island. So we need to look for better opportunities. I mentioned briefly before, we are looking at ways to improve composting capability by having master composters who can teach and educate people how to do it and looking at ways to have perhaps some distributed composting sites around the island so that people go easily, whether they're taking it to a rehydrator or to other ways of of composting, particularly food waste, which is a very high volume that's now going to the landfill. Although some of it is getting diverted to the pig farms. So there's a lot of pig farms, especially over in east side who want the, and get the, the food waste. But we need to make sure it's available to everybody around the county. And looking for creative ways to use materials without putting on our boat and shipping it thousands of miles someplace. So we need to have something that's cost effective, that's safe, that we can manage here on the island. But that's, that's a, a big part of what the Solid Waste Management Plan is about and what we're gonna be tracking and pushing and getting outside the box if we can, but we gotta get, we're on an island, so there's only so much we can fit on this island. But certainly there are ways that we can do it, including considering additional restrictions on what gets brought into the island. So that where you have ideas, pass them along. We are looking for, for creative ways to see how we can capture those resources back and use them again.
I'm thinking we should know this, but how would we get a chance to look at the solid waste management plan draft? Is it on the website?
Yeah, it's, it's on the Department of Environmental Management and this the hazardous Hawaii zero waste dot org website. If you go there, you can search and find the, the draft plan.
All right, thank you.
It's only four hundred pages long, so.
Right. Could we ask another question having to do with the fact that the Congress and president are talking about this major bill for jobs and infrastructure? And are there, is there a conversation? There was a brief reference to shovel ready, but being, being shovel ready with some of these major either wastewater or other projects that take big, big bucks. So we're in line or ready to go. And are we talking to our congressional team to help direct some of that funding?
I'll jump in on this one. Yes, yes. The, we are because this is stuff that, this is conversation that the director and I have had. The, the first swing at our wastewater cost is oh, probably in excess of three quarters of a billion dollars to really start getting things done. So yes, we are doing that. We've also had conversations concerning our solid waste. And I was just gonna throughout the diversion we're talking about and help me out, Georgina Ramsey. If I recall right, I think we are putting approximately six hundred tons of solid waste a day into our landfill, of which about fifty percent is biological, meaning whether it be green waste or, or whatever. Georgina is right, we are diverting some of the food waste, but we still have a lot of stuff going on. Are those, are those accurate numbers or am I not remembering correctly?
I don't know if Mike with us online, to be honest, I, I could check the numbers. I don't that sounds high, but like I said, I, I don't have the number handy. Is Mike our DVD chief online? Yes?
I just remember some of those numbers.
It takes a long time for me to find it. I, your percentage is correct. That we're looking at organic waste as being at least forty percent, if not more. We do a pretty good job of keeping green waste out now because we offer convenient ways to divert it. And we, we have closed that loop in that sense. Food waste is a little bit more complicated because it's so dispersed and nasty to handle. And so the large volume, the, the restaurants and hotels, they've got an outlet, they pretty well set up. But the whole consumer is, is the more challenging one and we throw away a lot of organic waste. I live in an apartment, so I don't really have a place to put my compost. So we're looking at what are some of the more close to residents ability? Whether we can help buy them the, the machines, the buckets that you put the compost in. At least do education programs to show people how to do composting. And maybe some little regional centers that we can have. There are a couple over Hilo side has got a lot more over than we do. So there, there are ways we're trying to, to challenge and look at it. But yeah, organic waste is our biggest volume, but I can't tell you the number. And
Usually, usually the diversion as far as the plastic, the reusable stuff, that's what we wanna keep out of the landfill. The organic food definitely for compost and we working on renegotiating that contract. And trying to figure out if we're gonna build a composted facility on the east and the west side, that way at least. To me, you know, it rains a lot on the east side. So composting has to be indoor versus on the west side, you could do it in the open air because the sun could actually help the composting process. Because you don't want it too wet. If it's on the east side, if it's not a, in a vessel or indoor, it's probably not gonna work for us on the east side. So some of these logistics, we're gonna work through with the contractor. But the goal is, you're correct. Right now, the way it's happening is, you know, we're human and everybody, if you live in an apartment or live in a house, you know, it's funny during the summit that Mayor Mitch had back in March, we had these fourteen years old coming in and talking about, you know, recycling and they said, you know, I wanna do different. My parents didn't teach me how to recycle because they don't recycle. They throw everything in one bag. And we take it to the transfer station. So, you know, so it's, you know, the new generation are thinking, you know, we wanna protect our ocean, we wanna protect our environment. They carry in these drinking bottle with them everywhere they go, so they don't have to buy plastic bottles. So we are on the right direction from a generational change. We're gonna get there eventually, but definitely we need to start looking at how to encourage separation of waste. And the only way to separate waste, you know, being in the business and the wastewater and solid waste for thirty plus years, it really, the collection is through providing three containers. So people behavior would change. Because if they have the containers next to their home, they know they're gonna put the green in the green container, they're gonna get the plastic and cardboard on the blue containers. And I understand, you know, the challenges here because we are decentralized all over the island, but we could do pilot program. You know, and where the community is, the center of the community is willing to do that. I think it'll be, you know, and that's the way to do it. We need to start changing behavior. And to change the behavior, do your education through a different methodology of how to do the separation. Because even most of our recycling, we met with Mr. K, for example. And they were complaining about the plastic comes in so dirty because it's get mixed with the organic food and they don't wanna touch it, especially with the COVID nineteen. So the most of it goes to our landfill because it just get mixed with the garbage and it gets thrown in the chute.
Could we go back, Tim and Mr. Ramsey, to federal funding streams for helping us? Is that a prospect of giving us a shot at some of this stuff?
I'll jump in on that. The President has promised basically a public works type of program coming forth. And I have to believe that we're going to see a lot of funding available for infrastructure because that's what has been stated and promised coming forth. Now Ramsey, you know, the funding available for solid way, for environmental management, solid waste and wastewater is, I'll use the term minimal at best. And if we truly want to make a difference, we're gonna have to be very serious about going after a bunch of funding. I am hopeful that we're gonna see something come forth. And, you know, again, we're looking at it whether it be for our roads, for our wastewater, you know, gets, or, or the solid ways. We want to talk about the the transfer stations and doing infrastructure improvement there that we could better handle trailers. This might be where we can see some of the funding coming back. It's too early right now and Congress is still arguing about it. But the, what has been promised is infrastructure funding. And so I've got my fingers crossed that we're gonna tap into as much as we can, as quickly as we can. And it's also, I'm hoping it's gonna be direct funding from the feds, not through the state, because that gets tangled up when it gets into the state. I see Ramsey smiling. He's probably gonna agree with me on that one. But so, yeah, that's the intent.
I hundred percent agree with you. Richard, Tim. The, the reason is, I don't know if you have heard it through, you know, that shovel ready project, we submitted our projects and we just found out last week that none of our project gonna get the funds through our congressman. It, it just were redirected somewhere else. So that was disappointed. We worked so hard trying to get these shovel ready projects. But there's a hope because the Biden now administration is pushing the infrastructure funding. And hopefully, I agree, if it goes through the federal easier than the state, because if it comes through the state, we're probably not gonna see much of it.
So anyway, that that's what we're looking for. And from NACO, that's the National Association of County, the conversation there is that this is looking, and, and all the counties are like this, they're looking for this infrastructure funding. So I, we gotta keep our fingers crossed. And as we get closer, please contact our House and Senate representatives in DC and support. I don't know, we have to push too hard because I think they're very supportive of getting this stuff done. But we just have to be mindful and keep your eyes open and be supportive of it when it comes forth.
Senator Shatz and Hi Ronald have both been really good about helping. But making sure they know we need the money to come straight to the county. Bypasses. An important message, it seems like.
We communicate this, but it's best if it comes from the community. I tell you, that really helps.
That's true. Makes a big difference. We've talked about resource recovery and I understand that there's a company and it's called something like Puna Plastics that are using, doing diversion with plastic recycling. Is that something we're interested in pursuing more of?
I definitely would love to talk to everybody that has a program that's proven. You know, since I've been here, all I've been meeting with people like a good sales, used car salespeople. They come in, they meet with me, but they never deliver on, on the promise. You know, and they go on, they disappear through the horizon. So definitely, if you have a contact, shoot them to me, I'd love to meet with them and look at their proven product. And that's what we after. Somebody has done it, somebody willing to to mobilize, collect, partner with us, and it could be a win-win.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the challenges has been there, there've been good-hearted people that want to do it. And they, they heard or they read on the internet someplace. All I need to do is melt this stuff and I could turn it into something else or make art with it. But it's not a sustainable business where you've got this steady flow of input of used plastic and a process to safely process it and clean it and make it into a new product and then distribute that product to somebody who's actually gonna pay for it so that you have a sustainable business cycle. And that's where we just have a lot of good thoughts, but practice is a little short. And we do have to make sure that any operations to do set up are environmentally sound, have safety and health practices that they're keeping up our most and not just, we'll do it in the backyard and we'll figure out how to make it work. It needs to be sustainable and safe.
Yeah, you know, there's one thing Ramsey that you touched on and I looked into this maybe probably right before the pandemic, a little bit before, there's a company out of either Australia or New Zealand that was manufacturing fence posts out of different plastics. And the beauty of that one was, we're not talking something beautiful or clear and it doesn't matter if it's got modeled coloring. I mean, it's very rustic. And apparently they had a process that could accept somewhat dirty plastics, but all the different twos, threes, fours, and it could all go in the mix. So I thought that might be something interesting to explore. It's been done before, working pretty well down there. And I thought if we get our energy grid more renewable and use that energy to do this, because you're gonna have to heat this stuff. I thought that might be a possibility, but again, need someone with the expertise to do it. And boy, I tell you what, cattle industry could sure use the fence post. So I know we have a market for it.
Yeah, definitely. That's actually a great idea to use the plastic. We had done it in California. We did a, you know, plastic fences, plastic sidewalks. Actually, we, we melted it and we created plastic sidewalks instead of concrete. But over the years, it stopped warbing, so it became hazard. So we, you know, so that we experienced all that. And, you know, and we did like park, museum parks where even for kids, swings and everything from reusable plastic. So definitely, you don't want to put it in a structure in the concrete. You want to do it if you could capture it, like you said, for posts and fences, that'd be, that'd be ultimate. The idea is to bring the people that wanted to do it on the island and bring their idea, their machinery. And if not, then if they willing to patent, if it's not patent idea, if they willing at least to share the idea, maybe, you know, the county willing to take on the cost of building that or bringing the machinery as part of the operation to become sustainable.
Sounds like we have more to talk on.
Yes.
I do have one question here from our live feed. If you don't mind, I'll jump in here with one. It's, it's really about something that we've, it's been proposed in the past and kind of see where the county is staying on this. It's our waste to energy ideas and see where that kind of plans are.
Yeah, I think I mentioned it earlier that I've been meeting with people trying to capture the the hydrogen out of the methane gas on the landfill and trying to put a hydrogen station for vehicles. There's a lot of interested parties. There's a lot of talk, but a lot of meetings. It's just the idea to capture that one person willing to say, I'm moving to Hawaii, bringing my zillions of dollars and I want to build it. And I think that's what we're gonna continue after. I think there's a lot of people with big capitals. But also they willing to risk the capital as they know the return is worth it for them. So I mean, we talked to people, you know, they're looking at 5% on their capital. Some told me 8%. Some, I mean, it just, and they have the money, but like I said, it's it's to land on the right decision-making and the right person that wanted to do it.
And so your, your example was particularly with our, our composting and capturing the methane gas from our green waste. It, what, what about, you know, it was proposed here in the past with the Big Island and Oahu has it with their, their waste energy power, their power plant, basically of, of burning materials for energy purposes. Thoughts on that?
It's funny, I, I gotta tell you my thought and I shared it with other people, but it may not be a favor to everybody. My thought is, I believe the state should make its power in Oahu as a state energy project and we should barge our waste from Hilo and Kona and sell it to Oahu and the state and make money because ultimately it's gonna be waste to energy for the whole state. But, but the idea is we'll go to zero waste overnight. And then we may generate revenue out of it because I know I was in Oahu, they're running out of fuel. They need more waste for that co-gen. They got two boilers being constructed. So definitely, you know, they may be, if it's, if it becomes a state project, it may be a win-win for every county within the state. But to build incinerator here on the island, it cost Oahu about initially $300 million, way when they first constructed it. It was through a partnership with a private entity through Goldman Sachs type of people. They wanted to build it and it didn't work out for them because they didn't generate enough waste to burn. The county and city ended up getting it for 150 million. Half of that. And now they still struggling because there's not enough a fuel to go to. But I think it could be a win-win, but that's my thoughts. I mean, we could overnight become a zero waste county.
I, this Georgine, if I can speak on behalf of, well, there's, there's two hats. One is my hat and how I think of it. But I think on behalf of the Environmental Management Committee, there is not support on this island to build an incinerator for waste. Forget it. We're not gonna make that happen politically. But I think there are times when it makes sense to look at what's the best use of our materials. Personally, I really like the idea of there's so many BTUs in plastic. Burning plastic is like burning jet fuel. It's, it's gonna give you a high bang for the buck and we ought to be able to make a fair amount of money from H Power and on Oahu to get our plastics. It's not the best answer. The best answer, I mean, you look at the, the pyramid for waste control. It's source reduction. Quit making all that waste in the first place by, by buying stuff you don't need. And then it's reuse it without having to spend a lot of time, money and, and energy to process it. And you could just use it again, take it to Habitat for Humanity and, and use it again. And then next comes, okay, process it and turn it into some other product, but that takes energy, it takes water, it takes various, various raw materials to make happen. And then next is energy recovery. At least don't lose the energy that's embedded in our waste. And one way to do that is ship it over to Oahu and, and see what they would take for it. And then last but not least is you bury it. And bury it in a sanitary landfill that isn't going to, to contaminate groundwater and try and work that best. Obviously, we want to start at the top of the pyramid, but eventually you're gonna work your way down and that's your option, at least on a temporary basis. May not be the best option, but until you can get to the point where you're not generating the waste in the first place, use it in the best way possible. So I'm, I'm kind of with Ramsey that yeah, we can package up and, and maybe even make some money off of some of our waste right now until we get processing and reuse on this island.
Thank you. And I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna drag the conversation back to trailers again. We have another, we have another question about that. And it's particularly about the Puana Hulu landfill, our West Side landfill. And you know, that location is on a high-speed highway there, 55 mile an hour. How can we, if we're encouraging our community members and our residents to, to take their trailers there instead, for this instance, how can we make that intersection safer? How can we make transit safer to that location? So, you know, it's like an infrastructure, it's tied in with our, our DPW as well and the actual state highway. So DOT and that sort of sense, but we need to consider safety there at that intersection and, and the delivery of waste to that place.
Yeah, that, that is a good question. I think we could work with the DOT to to start laying out the possibility of some type of traffic control at that intersection. Maybe traffic lights, do a right turn pocket coming into the landfill or a left turn pocket coming in from Waimea. And we could work with them to figure out the traffic counts. I'm sure that's something that the state probably will be interested. And we need to push also politically our elected official estate level to encourage the DOT to start funding that project and moving forward.
But I jumped in too, James.
Yeah, well, sure, go ahead, Patty.
As long as we're talking about hauling our green waste down to Puana Hulu on weekends, Puana Hulu is closed on weekends, just so you know.
On Sundays are closed, only on Sundays.
Only Sunday? I thought it was Saturday on Sunday.
No, Saturday we open.
Yeah.
Good. All right, we got a plan.
So in terms, in terms of our last, thanks Patty, thanks. Yeah, just so it's open on Saturdays, the West Side landfill, just for clarity there. But in terms of the conversation about the safety on the highway there, that's something that you know, we can definitely bring up with our Southbald Traffic Safety Committee and talking with our DOT representative and trying to find a solution for that intersection there. If, if that is the encouragement we're giving to our residents of, of hauling there, we need to kind of address other issues around that as well. Any, any last questions from either Patty or Mike for our guests this evening?
No, I think we're good.
Oh, Mike, go ahead.
My only comment or thought, and I welcome the panel's thoughts on this, is to engage the educational sector from University of Hilo to the high schools, elementary schools. And it gets at what Ramsey was talking about, changing the mindset and changing behaviors. And so I've got experience with schools up here in, in Waimea from Hawaii Prep to Parker and Kano O'Kaina. And I think that really starts at the grassroots level and teaches the kids about the basics, composting, sorting, the three Rs, et cetera. And I do believe there is huge potential here on this island to set an example for a huge audience. And we've, we're just sitting there and I know it requires a lot of funding, it requires resources. But I just, I, I look at the potential and I see that there's greatness in what we could do in terms of recycling.
All sent.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. Any, any last words from either Chair Adams, Director Monsieur, or Councilmember Richards, if any last words on this topic or anything you'd like to share?
Just wind it up and say, I think the form and the format of this meeting was really good because it was a true top story. And I think a lot of ideas were shared and concerns aired. So I think I really liked the format on how this meeting went. And obviously, we got a lot of work ahead. You know, Director Monsieur laid that out. I'm sitting here scratching my head how to help pay him, help him pay for all this stuff, so we're working on it, but thanks.
Thank you.
Well, I really want to thank Director for your time, for spending here this evening, a little bit of time with us. And we look forward to having more conversations with you, of course, in the future. And of course, we'd like to thank Chair, Chair Georgine Adams for your, your service representing District Nine on the commission. Thank you for your ideas and your input and your leadership there. And of course, thank you, Counselor, for joining us as always and your ideas and supporting our different departments at the executive level. So thank you, Counselor. And before we kind of wrap up this evening, I just want to make a couple of announcements here, a couple of just quick mentions, last few words. Mahalenui to all of our presenters for joining us this evening and for taking the time to update our viewers, helping to lead our community. And of course, thank you to all the viewers on the call, join us on the live stream and those watching at a later point. Thank you. You're welcome to revisit, to re-watch these recordings up on our Facebook page or up on our YouTube channel. Our next scheduled meeting is Thursday, June Our next scheduled meeting is Thursday, June third. And it's our goal and our plan at this point to meet and talk with a couple of the larger renewable energy projects that are happening here in South Pohalo. We plan on speaking with the Interjects Project as well as the EDS one uh that's located in the Waikoloa region. So we hope you can join us for that entertaining and educational uh talk, uh conversation with those different projects and learning more about their steps and their procedures and all that's happening there. So we look forward and hope you can join us. And on behalf of the Waimea Community Association Board, I wish you good health, be well, aloha.